Times viewers, welcome to all election night coverage 2024. The August general election for Campbell County. We have five disputed school board seats. We have a road superintendent that is running unopposed and a disputed property assessor's race. I'm joined here tonight. We have Josh, Isaac, John. You all can take a second to introduce yourselves.
John Muse, Volunteer Times.
Isaac Jones, Volunteer Times.
And Josh Griffin, Volunteer Times.
That's the All Times crew.
Simple enough. Now, interesting thing is we're guaranteed two more, two new school board members tonight, but we could have an entire flipped school board. This is the first time in a while that all five of the school board seats have an opposition in them. So we're guaranteed a new third and fifth district member. And we have incumbents in the, in the first, second, and fourth districts.
Lot of closely contested races going out there. Lot of campaigning going on. Pretty good candidates across the board for all the school board seats. And, you know, just you've got to hope whoever wins will put the kids first. And I expect they will. You've got a lot of background and education out of some candidates, people who have been on the school board already as incumbents, Pat mentioned, have done a good job. So no really any bad choices, so we'll see where it goes here starting pretty soon.
Right, we're by US Cellular official time, three minutes away from the polls closing. Of course, if someone is in line, even as the polls close, those people will be given an opportunity to vote. We will probably be hearing from Alan Miller at the Election Commission relatively quickly with the early voting.
And we do have people spread out across first, second, third, fourth, and fifth district at different polling locations. And we'll be hearing from those people tonight as the election results are posted on the wall. And of course, property assessor, school board, those are the big races. Dilbeck, he's going to go in unopposed as Patrick mentioned, but we will get his vote tally for him.
Now, interestingly enough, this is the first time the fifth district of Campbell County is having a LaFollette polling location.
Yes, I actually live pretty close to that polling location. You'd have to drive about 10 miles to win, to vote. So we do have someone there. It's Mary Enman. She will be bringing us live results from the new location. It's a LaFollette Brick Center, I believe.
John, you, you voted today, correct?
I did vote today.
How was the turnout when we entered?
Well, I got there around 2:30 in the afternoon and some people were leaving and we were the only ones in line otherwise. So not quite the turnout that you see in the big elections that's going to happen two years from now that has sheriff and county mayor and all that. But it could have just been the time I was there, but it was still, I go about the same time every election cycle and there's less, there was less people there today. So it's definitely going to be a smaller turnout election, I believe.
Now, I early voted. And the day I early voted, it was myself and Melman Kits and Warren Kits were the three of us that were in there voting. We were in and out. I want to give a big shout out to our Election Commission for making early voting such a smooth process. And this year, we actually have a new sort of voting machine.
We did. Now, Isaac, I know that you're still in high school, obviously. And have you studied anything about any of the candidates and any of their stances? And, you know, anything that motivates you as a student to look forward to what's coming up, you know, with a potential new school board?
Yeah, John, I find it very exciting about their school board race here. And like Patrick said, we could have a whole flipped board on half the board because, you know, the other half is voted in in two years. But like I say, I think they're all great candidates. I think they all could bring a wealth of experience and leadership into our school board. I think our school board is, is an awesome phenomenal board, and I think that we can only improve from here. So I'm very excited to see how the school board turns out and, you know, they're, they're just great.
And of course, in the third district, Johnny Burge was a longtime board member, former chairman. He did a lot of good work there and he is looking to change his political direction. As, I mean, we all know, he's picked up a petition to run for mayor of LaFollette. So he, we knew he wasn't going to be seeking reelection. I, I've not talked to Steve Morgan on to why he is not, but you know, sometimes, like being careful, sometimes you feel like you've done your job and you're just ready to move on. And I feel like that's probably Steve Morgan's case.
Jellico did get a lot of facility improvements under Morgan here and the rest of the school board. They're getting their new turf field, the gym's getting worked on, Jellico Elementary, and several other improvements they got. So maybe he felt like, once he got those passed through there, that he would give it over to somebody else.
And kudos to our board. Jellico High School is going to be phenomenal as far as their facilities go for football. They've already got a great basketball facility, but getting that new turf field is just like a crowning achievement. And again, kudos, you know, to Steve Morgan, who's also retiring as chairman of the board. I don't know Steve that well, but my, all my interactions with Steve Morgan has been positive. So, you know, kudos to him for years of service to our school board.
But it is now after eight, the polls have closed. For those not in line, as Patrick mentioned, if you are in line, you will get a chance to vote. But otherwise, we should start seeing the returns come in as quickly as they can print them off and post them. And our correspondents out in the field start sending them in. We'll have Josh down here tallying them up for us and all the Times Big Board that he created over here, so.
Yeah, why don't I take you through the board here and we can take a look at who the candidates are for, for each race. I think that's something that we, we touched on some of the candidates, but we haven't gotten to all of them. So in the first race here, we've got Assessor Property, Marie Ayers, Clark Ford, and Brandon Parton. And as each of the polling stations come in, we'll enter that data in here. It will automatically tally it for us. And then we've got a leaderboard here that we'll update as that data comes in. As you guys mentioned, the road superintendent unopposed, so we can, we can already call that one. I'm pretty confident. We've got school board District One, Sherry Chapman and Lisa Clausen Fields in that race. School board District Two, Brent Lester and Marvin T. Rutherford. District Three, Jessica Childress and Brandon Johnson. That's my district. Both of them came and knocked on my door. Let's see, we've got District Four, Josh James and Jamie Wheeler. And for District Five, Ryan Cummins and Bob Walden.
Now, interesting thing about District Five, like I mentioned, LaFollette, having a polling place changes everything, but there's been elections in District Five in the past where, once Jellico came in, you could almost call it. Just because it's so much bigger than the other precincts. But now with LaFollette there, that adds a new wrinkle. Another interesting wrinkle, place where I saw the biggest changes was in the third and fourth district because they moved roughly 600 voters from the fourth into the third in the recent redistricting to balance out the way the population went up. We also know though, we learned in this last election, that literally people, people sometimes say, I don't know why I vote, my vote don't matter. Literally, we had a commission race that was decided by a single vote. And a judge's race, it was decided by single-digit votes.
Yeah, every vote counts. And if you want your voice heard on the boards, the offices in the county, go vote. That's the only way you're going to get it heard. And, you know, study your candidates. Pretty much any candidate is probably willing to meet you, talk to you, maybe come to your house. As Josh mentioned, they come to his house. You know, we've all met different of the candidates at some point or another. And, you know, you just assess it from there, but make sure you do vote. It's very important. This is, these elections are what decides what happens to you in your life every day. Everybody gets fired up over presidential elections and things like that, but these local offices affect you far more than those do.
Now, I also know that both candidates in the fourth came by my house. I was not home for either of them, but they both left their calling cards. There were times that, that I actually went out with Brandon in the third. I, I know both he and Jessica were heavily knocking on doors.
I found it interesting that only two people ran for each office. That's not always been the case in the past. Sometimes you have three or four people and especially when it's, you know, county commission as well. But school board, you would usually have three or four people running for each office, but this year it was just two for each.
It narrows it down a lot, John, I believe. I believe that it, it really gives the voters a certain choice on who they're voting for.
Definitely make sure, you know, you can get to know your candidate much more, you know, easily and, and just know who you're going to vote for. Maybe study if they're incumbent, what they've done in office that you agreed with or disagreed with. Or get the policies from the new candidates.
And again, there's, in the case of District Three and District Five, neither candidate been on school board before. Now, Bob Walden had been on county commission. Oh, I think we may have our first results coming in. Sophia Demont at Valley View Elementary School. Let's bring this up. In the property assessor's race, Marie Ayers with 101 votes. Clark Ford with 18 votes. And Brandon Parton with 217 votes.
So that was a pretty good turnout for this particular election cycle for Valley View. Brandon took a pretty nice lead there in, in the first, first wave of votes.
In our school board, this is hard to read. Sherry Chapman, it looks like, got 154 votes. And Lisa Clausen Fields, it looks like, got 150 votes.
Close race.
And that, that's from a, I'm going to have her to send me a better picture of that.
That is an incredibly tight result right there. It's like we were talking about in the first district, the county commission, that, that commission seat being decided by one vote. This may come down to just a couple of votes.
And this was, I was talking with Coach Johnny Bruce, because we talk politics all the time. We felt like this District One was going to be the closest race.
I have some Newcombe results here sent in by Vanessa Cricmore. Property assessor, Marie Ayers, 29 votes. Clark Ford, two votes. Brandon Parton, 80 votes. School board District Five, Newcombe, Ryan Cummins, 92 votes. Bob Walden, 22 votes.
Ooh.
You said, what was?
92?
92.
And for the sake of completion, Ron Dilbeck got 80 votes in that particular.
Also, let, let's update the school board in District One. Sherry Chapman actually got 164 votes. And Lisa Fields got 159. So still very close.
Five vote separation. That's a, that's a big result for Ryan there in the Newcombe district.
Did you get a Valley View total on the superintendent race?
Let me, let me look that one up, please. Just a second.
I've got some votes coming in from the fourth district, from Jaxborough Middle School, from TJ Heatherly. It looks like Josh James has got 90 votes.
Now, this is the school board?
School board, yes, sir.
All right, let's see.
In the fourth district. So at Jaxborough Middle, we got Josh James coming in with 90 votes in there. And Jamie Wheeler coming in with 112.
Very tight, very tight.
I mean, looks.
And in that road superintendent race at Valley View, it is looking like Ron Dilbeck got 187 and three write-ins on that one, so.
Didn't leave any spots for write-ins. I'll probably share that.
And on the road superintendent at Jaxborough Middle School, looks like we have got 178 votes for Ron Dilbeck.
So going back, let's get back to the leaderboard, but Ryan Cummins at the top of that District Five.
I have some additional District Five from the LaFollette Bricks in a precinct, the tiny bit of LaFollette that is now in District Five. All right. We'll start with property assessor. Marie Ayers, four. Clark Ford, one. Brandon G. Parton, 11.
Okay, I have Jaxborough Middle also.
Okay.
Jaxborough Middle School. Josh James, I have 90.
Oh, this is for the?
This is for school board, yes. Apologies.
Josh James, 90.
90. And Jamie Wheeler has 112.
Okay.
And the property assessor race, Marie Ayers has 67. Clark Ford has 15. Brandon Parton has 124.
Back to the LaFollette, school board race from the fifth district, the small section of LaFollette, sent in by Mary Enman. Ryan Cummins has six votes. Bob Walden, nine, at the LaFollette precinct of the fifth district. And Ron Dilbeck, 15 votes for road superintendent. That is the LaFollette, right? That is the LaFollette precinct, LaFollette Brick Center, sent in by Mary Enman. Thank you, Mary.
So Brandon with a pretty hefty lead there in the property assessor race. Nothing on District Two or Three yet.
I have West LaFollette.
Let me, let me update the leaderboard, District Four there.
In District Three, I have West LaFollette by Devon Jones.
That was drenched at the Election Commission.
Oh dear.
Yes, apparently the thunderstorm's beating at the Election Commission right now.
All right, West LaFollette, property assessor?
Uh, property assessor, Nancy Marie Ayers, 21. Clark Ford, three. Brandon Parton, 55. And let's see.
Stop calling.
Well, that's, that's what's happening to me. People are blowing at my phone and I can't read a...
I do.
Okay. Make sure I'm still on. Okay, yes, this is. Wait a minute. Come, come back to me. Go ahead and finish your all zip right there. I'm going to see what he's done here.
Trying to explain to people that I can't talk on the phone right now.
Okay, now I've got Jessica Childress, school board, 41 votes. Brandon Johnson, 39. And that is at West LaFollette.
All right, so on the leaderboard, we'll add Jessica Childress to District Three for With the first, first votes coming in in District Three. Did you get a West LaFollette on road superintendent, just for tracking?
Uh, I did, but I won't be able to get to it for just a second, yeah.
Fifth district, Jellico. This is Sam Walden. She's at Jellico Elementary School. Property assessor, Anne Marie Ayers, 52. Brandon Parton, 121. School board District Five.
Nothing on Clark Ford there.
Well, let's see. Oh, Clark Ford, three, pardon me.
Okay.
School board District Five, Ryan Cummings, 144.
This is Jellico. Where you guys?
This is Jellico Elementary.
All right, and we'll just count that.
Ryan Cummings, 144. Bob Walden, 32. So barring an early voting miracle, looks like Ryan Cummings may be the new fifth district school board member. That's, that's, that is the biggest district in the fifth, the biggest polling location in the fifth.
Okay, I have LaFol, I have LaFollette Elementary.
All right, let's see. Which district is this?
This is second district.
Second district, okay. Property assessor.
Make sure. Yes, okay, property assessor. Nancy Marie Ayers, 76 votes. Clark Ford, 10 votes. Brandon Parton, 157. Road superintendent, 219. School board, Brent Lester. Holler when you're ready. Okay, Brent Lester, 163. Marvin Rutherford, 74.
That'll put Brent Lester on the leaderboard.
District Two. For the sake of completion, the fifth district, Jellico Elementary School, road superintendent, Ron Dilbeck, 144.
Which polling place was this?
This is Jellico Elementary School in the fifth district.
Okay. And it was?
144 for Ron Dilbeck. So how are the totals looking right now for?
So in property assessor, we've got Brandon Parton leading 765 to 350 over the next closest opponent there with Marie Ayers. Clark Ford coming in third at 52 votes. Road superintendent, again, unopposed, but we're just tracking it. School board District One, Sherry Chapman leads by a narrow five-vote margin over Lisa Fields.
I actually have a third district total in Cole has sent me from Jaxborough Station.
Cole Williams?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Property assessor, Marie Ayers, 94 votes. Clark Ford, 17 votes. Brandon Parton, 246 votes. For completion's sake, I've got road superintendent next. Ron Dilbeck has 319 votes. And in the school board race, Jessica Childress, 112 votes. Brandon Johnson, 234 votes.
So we got a lead change there in the school board, District Three.
I also have...
I just, okay, you got one, all right. Sorry, Kayden Poston just sent some in. He has District One, Pine Crest Volunteer Fire Department.
Pine Crest, Pine Crest, word, right. There we go.
Okay, we have property assessor's race, Marie Ayers, 44. Clark Ford, four. Brandon Parton, 54. If we need it, Ron Dilbeck is 87. School board, Sherry Chapman has 44. And Lisa Fields has 46.
Well, this is going to come right down to the wire on this race.
Well, I've got another first district one from the Pine Crest Firehouse. Start with property assessor.
Pine Crest Firehouse?
Alder Springs.
Alder Springs, okay.
Sorry, that's, that's what he put it as, is Firehouse. Let's go with the property assessor, Marie Ayers, 44. Clark Ford, four. Brandon Parton, 54. Road superintendent, Ron Dilbeck got 87 votes. And this, this school board race continues to be crazy close.
Yeah, these are all the same.
I'm sorry, this is Pine Crest.
Yeah, these are all the same numbers as Pine Crest.
My apologies.
I do have some votes coming in from the fourth district. Eli Lawson from Ridgewood. We'll start with property assessor, Marie Ayers with 46.
He said, uh?
Ridgewood.
Ridgewood, okay. Marie Lawson, 46.
Yes. We've got Clark Ford with three and Brandon Parton with 79. If we go on down to school board in the District Four, we have Josh James coming in with 57 in Ridgewood, 57 from Josh James. Got Jamie Wheeler coming in with 59. And in terms of, in terms of road superintendent, 116 for Ron Dilbeck.
And I have third district Campbell County High School, whenever we're ready. Has anybody else got one they want to throw out?
Go ahead.
Okay. Holler when you're ready, Josh.
Ready.
Okay, this is from Megan Vaddlingham, a Times staff member. We will begin with property assessor, Nancy Marie Ayers, 44. Clark Ford, two. Brandon Parton, 113. Ron Dilbeck, if we need that, just for giggles, because we know he's going in, 145. And school board, Jessica Childress, 50 votes. Brandon Johnson, 112. That's Campbell County High School.
Anybody got any fresh updates or Josh should work us through the tally again?
Yeah, let's, let's go back through the leaderboard here and we'll check each race. We'll start with the property assessor and think we're pretty safe and sound. Brandon's lead's pretty safe there. Road superintendent, school board District One, we've got Sherry Chapman leading.
Very close, three votes, leading by three votes.
It's school board District Two, still have Brent Lester. School board District Three, Brandon Johnson, and I believe we updated that. Jamie Wheeler took over again in District Four, so if we go back to the leaderboard, District Four. Yeah, we're good there. And District Five is Ryan Cummings in the lead there, so.
A strong lead there.
That fifth district with Jellico coming in that big, it's going to be hard for Bob to overcome that unless he just had a really big, big early voting period.
And I now have College Hill from Melman Kits.
So where's the rolling out there, folks? So hopefully we're able to keep power, stay on for you here.
Um, okay, okay. I have LaFollette Middle School, second district.
Do we want to go College Hill first?
Oh, yes, to College Hill first.
Okay, College Hill. Property assessor, Marie Ayers, 18 votes. Clark Ford, three votes. Brandon Parton, 43 votes. Ron Dilbeck got 59 courtesy votes. And in the school board race, District Two, Brent Lester with 31 votes.
And Marvin Rutherford with 23. Todd dug a little bit on that one, but Brent's still decent lead.
All right, and then you said you had?
I have LaFollette Middle School.
LaFollette Middle, where you at?
It's District Two. That would be actually considered the East LaFollette region.
Okay.
Okay. Property assessor, Marie Ayers, 34. Clark Ford, five. Brandon Parton, 95. Ron Dilbeck, 122. I'm trying to get my... Brent Lester, school board, 79. Marvin Rutherford, 52.
And I apparently have Careful.
Oh, wow, hey.
Uh, property assessor. And this looks like a pretty big voter turnout for this one. Property assessor, Marie Ayers, 66. Clark Ford, nine. Brandon Parton, 165. Road superintendent, Ron Dilbeck got 211 courtesy votes. And in our school board race, Josh James, 112.
Let's see.
Okay, have we?
Jamie Wheeler, 124. Jamie Wheeler, one hundred and twenty-four.
We'll, uh, we've got a lead change there.
That race is swapping back and forth. It seems like every election results that come in.
In the district four, we'll update that.
Have you announced, uh-
I don't know.
District one Alder Springs yet?
We have not.
Okay, because it just came to me. Okay. Alrighty.
Alder Springs.
Yes. I was just making sure we hadn't announced it yet. I'm gonna scroll through here. Okay. Property assessor, district one Alder Springs Voting Precinct, Marie Ayers, thirty-one. Clark Ford, two. Brandon Parton, forty-one. Road superintendent, Ron Dilbeck, sixty-nine. School board, district one, Sherry Chapman, twelve. Lisa Clausen Fields, sixty-three.
Well, that, that may tell the tale right there. That, that was a, that was a pretty significant distance between the two.
That wasn't a very big gap.
It was early voting, you'll have to see where it comes in at.
Certainly.
So some of these races are looking like they're and it would take a strange trend for some of the races, you know, especially Brandon Parton and the property assessor. It would take a strange trend in early voting versus what we're seeing on election day for that would not essentially be called for Brandon Parts at this point.
But, but I will point out the very first time that, that I ran, I actually lost by about five votes at the actual polls. But won by over two hundred during early voting. So it, it can happen.
There can be big swings, but for a countywide race, that's, that's pretty tough to overcome.
It is.
What's the lead to Brandon's build up so far?
Certainly.
And the fifth district, I'm not sure how big their early voting turnout usually is, but Ryan Cummings got an awful, that, that Jellicoe result of him just going by nearly a hundred votes, that was just really it'd be really tough for Bob to overcome that.
And, and of course with Jellicoe, they actually have early voting in a separate building up there. You don't have to have the election commission. They, you can go to, I think, just the municipal building to vote there.
We have Ms. Sophia Demont with us.
Her on camera.
Yeah, jump in over there, Sophie. I'm sure, watch your step. Don't trip on the ground.
So Sophia's been, uh, very good. She, she took care of Valley View. We're happy to have her on the team.
She may give an election cheer before the night's over.
She, she is our favorite junior cheerleader.
We appreciate her help tonight.
Okay, now let's go back again and start going through the totals while we wait on more to come in and we can see who's in the lead. So we have some races that are switching back and forth.
So at, uh, the assessor property race, we've got Brandon Parton, sixteen oh one over Marie Ayers, seven twenty-seven, and Clark Ford with ninety-seven votes.
And I'm gonna say this about Clark. For somebody that didn't campaign at all, he's still gonna break a hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, with road superintendent, just for tracking purposes, Dilbeck with nineteen fifty-one. District one school board, uh, Lisa Fields just with the last reported, uh, precinct took the lead, two sixty-eight to two twenty. Um, Brent Lester leading district two, two seventy-three to one forty-nine. Brandon Johnson leading district three, three eighty-five to two oh three. Jamie Wheeler with a very narrow margin there in district four. Uh, two ninety-five to fifty-nine with two districts left to report, so that's anybody's race. And with, let's see, four precincts still left to report in district five, we've got Ryan Cummings leading two forty-two to sixty-three.
I'll say this about the, the outstanding precincts there in the fifth district, other than early voting, they're pretty small.
I, I also have results coming in from, um, well, Springs, but I'm gonna have to get her to send me closer pictures.
Okay. I'm, I'm on that.
Because, uh-
Sophia's getting a lot of love in the comments section of the screen.
Thanks, you guys.
Her, her cheerleading colleague is sending me results right now, Colin, so.
It is a, uh, I, I'm pretty much, I feel like I'm comfortable saying that, that Brandon Parton is gonna be reelected as property assessor at this point. That would be an awfully, awfully huge amount of-
None of the outstanding precincts are big except well, actually none of the outstanding precincts are big except early vote.
Virtually all of the early voting would have to be carried in, in his direction for her to overcome a nine hundred vote approximately margin, so.
She'd have to double her votes just to catch up.
Yeah, that would be just an incredible amount. I mean, I'm not sure how many people early voted exactly, but she would have to get a large, large percentage of the early votes to catch up at this point.
Uh, someone, someone's asking when will early voting be fully accounted for?
We are currently at the election commission right now. Our Alan Miller's at the election commission for us. He said they're not letting anybody in right now. They're actually standing outside in the thunderstorm, so thank you very much, Alan Miller, for, you know, going through all that. He said he looked like a wet rat, but-
He's a turnvir.
I mean, he does ghost walks and waves her like this.
So, you know, just whenever Al can get in and get the results, we'll have those and-
And so in the countywide races, seven precincts still left to report.
None of them big, except for early vote.
But Brandon Parton with a pretty commanding lead there.
Very much so.
That would be really, really tough.
Like, if I were in Vegas, I would bet Brandon around that much.
Most of them would let you at this point. I, I would bet Ron Dilbeck.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I, I would like to think George Hook's got at least one right in for that.
Did get a write-in vote for that.
Three, three, three precincts still to report on that school board, district one.
We're, we're waiting on one to come in.
That one is absolutely going to be decided. Still, it's up in the air. It's really close. That district four extremely up in the air. District three is somewhat up in the air as well. And so is district two, so these school board races, other than the fifth so far, are really tight.
Uh, Lisa Wilson in the comments asking who's in the lead for property assessor. Uh, Lisa, there's the board right there. Uh, Brandon Parton leading Marie Ayers and Clark Ford, sixteen oh one to seven twenty-seven.
Alan Miller is in the election commission. We will have early voting soon.
And Colin is getting ready to send those again. We just hope that we're not in the dark.
Again, the power has flickered off once already and that light of hope struck pretty close by, so we're gonna hope it stays on.
If we lose power, I will continue on with interpretive dance.
Come out to the highway here.
Oh, what a night it will be.
Jumpstart our highway. We'll be out here dancing the, the results in for you.
Just look for the flashing blue lights. I'm sure somebody's gonna call them on.
So here's a look at the, at the leaderboard there without the vote tallies. That's just who's leading right now. Still have several precincts to report, uh, seven countywide.
Sophia, Valley View, while you were there, were people still voting up towards eight o'clock or were you just, everybody pretty much finished?
Just, I think, like, they're usually like everything, so.
Listen, your, your father keeps trying to call me. I keep explaining to him, I can't talk. He's like, nope, I'm gonna keep calling.
So I'm glad that you all, your family got in and thank you very much once again. And you and all of our correspondents out in the field have went above and beyond to get us these results. And especially Al who's went above and below and under the water and everything else apparently.
It looks like most of your family's watching too, so they heard you say that about them.
They know. We love you, Tom. You're a saint. Chris, you know, your career's been like-
And all the little Demonts out there.
There are lots of Demonts.
I'll let them extra show. They're hosting an exchange student this year.
Yes, I mean, if you're watching the comments with my results and you feel like you need an exchange student in your life, contact Kelly Jo.
That's right.
Now, I did notice some folks walked in. Do we have more results from them?
Uh, no, we do not. We've already had those, uh, tally from those, yes. I'm just gonna have, everybody's in there just kinda getting something to eat and-
As they should. There's some delightful pizza in there. The Millman has arrived.
Yes, he did.
Rain nor sleet nor snow has stopped him from being here tonight.
Of course, he had the tally town meeting tonight, so he got held up.
George Hook's is asking why he's not part of this broadcast. He says he is the official Campbell County scorekeeper.
George, you are going to be on the mayor broadcast from what I understand since you've announced your candidacy.
And we do congratulate you on your write-in vote for road superintendent.
Yes, I know for a fact that you got one. Now, in all seriousness, as soon as Al gets these early election results in for us, we could probably call just about every race at this point due to this. Although, I'm not gonna say that necessarily for sure because that fourth district and first district are so close that we may have to get every single to vote in because every single vote will count. Hopefully Al can get those votes as well as early voting while he's down there.
Just take you through the board one more time so we can look at those tallies. Brandon Parton with the commanding lead in the assessor property race. Road superintendent, nineteen hundred and fifty-one for Mr. Dilbeck. Very tight district one school board race. Very tight, forty vote spread there. School board district two, we've got Brent Lester leading Marvin Rutherford, two seventy-three to one forty-nine. District three, Brandon Johnson edging out Jessica Childress, three eighty-five to two oh three. With only the early voting left to report on that one. And district four, very, very tight race there.
And this is one of those, like I said earlier, Clinchmore, which normally votes fifteen to twenty people. Could be a very big telling in this one.
Clinchmore's the only one outstanding from there.
Early voting in Clinchmore.
Early vote, of course, but I did ask Al if he could get the, the Clinchmore, Stony Fork vote totals for us and also win Haversham. I think we're outstanding on those. Ask him if he could come up with those as well. Have we got Dimery yet from Hayden Fields?
We do not.
Nope. We do not have Dimery yet.
We're waiting on Dimery from Hayden. Very, very spotty cell service in those areas, so.
Yeah, but those Demoreans suffer. Um, it's, you know, you get out there, it's tough to get a signal. So, you know, that one, that may be one we also have to get Al to get from the commission for us. And again, big thank you to Alan Miller who went above and beyond for us. Now Chris is mentioning me in comments.
We've got a lot of results in pretty quick. So we, we at least have enough that once early voting comes in, it's gonna be.
Oh, they're talking about how loss of Demont should be a book and I should write it.
There are, um, there's a few districts outstanding, mostly small ones. But in some of these close races, that, as Patrick mentioned, that Clinchmore-
And Dimery, Dimery and Clinchmore.
Dimery, those races are extremely close right now.
Now, here's another thing that, that could be interesting. Um, you know, we're gonna have to have an appointment of a county commissioner. As Scotty Kitts has resigned, the commission to run for mayor of LaFollet. So that's, you know, that could be a thing too where the commission could choose to run a special election in November for that position. So this November one coming up, in addition to the municipal races, potentially has a special election for a county commission, see the second district.
Samantha Walden, thank you for the, the love and the comments there. A lot of people out there at the voting stations, at the precincts, at the voting commission, working really hard to bring these results in as fast as we can get it.
Sam is the one that brought the, uh-
Lisa Fields is in the house here.
Jellicoe results, so thank her.
Maybe, maybe she has the Dimery results. Nobody's waiting to hear Dimery with us, huh?
She just brought Dimery with her. That's okay.
I don't know.
Well, Kim, uh, we're just waiting on the final, on the, uh, early voting.
And Al's in the election commission right now to get the early voting totals.
Al just messaged me, said still no results yet. It does strangely, and I've been down at the election commission for this before. I don't know why that it takes a long time to get the early vote out. I've never understood that because you'd think they would have it immediately. But I was down there for this particular election cycle four years ago. I was at the election commission. It took till around nine o'clock to get that out. But I would expect it in the next five to ten minutes.
So we've kinda hit a little stall here. Do you guys see any surprises?
No.
I'm personally a little surprised that Bob Walden is, you know, he's losing by that margin.
Okay, I will give you that.
He's a longtime educator in the fifth district and that, that kinda surprised me. Ryan's very popular up there though and, you know, works, I believe he works in the Welcome Center.
Yes.
Um, he got an endorsement from Tyler on the county commission and, you know, Tyler's a great guy and the commission-
And very, very well beloved in that fifth district.
So that helped him a lot. So Ryan, Ryan, you know, that, that margin's surprising me. Maybe the property assessor being that lopsided at this point is a little surprising because those county officers are usually pretty closely contested.
And, and obviously, though it was out of Brandon's control, that reassessment hit at the worst time in this election cycle and as of right now, it's looking like he's overcame that.
He did a nice, you know, him and Marie both were given video opportunity with the Times and Brandon explained himself on our Times video about, you know, all that, so apparently that worked for him.
And I wanna give kudos to Marie. She, she got out and worked hard too. Um, you know, I've, I've talked to Marie several times. We've been friends since middle school. And, you know, she gave it her all and her team gave it their all and kudos to them.
Ron Dilbeck's office is such a specialized office that you have to have certain qualifications to run for that office that other offices don't really have. But I was still surprised someone didn't run against him. But I guess maybe no one with the qualifications felt like running.
Now, in the, um, in the other school board races, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about my district before us. Josh has done a fine job in two different districts as a school board member. I really like Josh. He's a super guy. And I mean, he, he does. He does it because he cares. Jamie Wheeler, I've known the vast majority of my life. We've worked together as her being administrator, me being a coach, me being an announcer, me being a media member. She brings an absolute wealth of educational experience with her. Um, very, very smart lady, very, very qualified. And the only sad thing about that race is somebody has to lose.
Right. Yeah, I feel like that, that was a tough choice for a lot of voters in the fourth district. I feel like a lot, both of the candidates worked very hard for that and they both have a lot of qualifications. And one thing that you'll see across the, um, across the districts in the school board races is that one may be an educator or a former educator and one may be somebody that, that has never taught. So it's, it's, it gives a very big, um, uh, choice to the voter.
And, and, you know, I'll, I'll give you an interesting perspective. First off, as I ever ran for was the seat that, um, Jamie Wheeler and Josh James are running for. I actually lost that election. Um, first, like I said, first one. But I, I just graduated UT. Had just graduated my masters in education. We were, uh, I just felt like you know, maybe I could bring a fresh perspective in the fact that I hadn't been out of school that long.
Right.
Um, I was young, I was younger than Brandon, who is probably our youngest candidate running. Well, I mean, he is our youngest candidate running. Our guy, Caden Poston, is in the house.
He made it in. We might get some of these guys to jump in here while they're here for a minute or two.
Yeah, Caden, you wanna hop in for a minute?
Yeah. Sophia, can I borrow your spot for just a second and we'll switch out and let some different people over there?
And, oh, Caden's making sure he's, making sure he's good.
He's got his hair fixed up.
Looking good, Caden. I, I get it, Caden. I fixed my hair before I came to.
Looked like my bum.
Someone in the comments is asking how the LaFollet City elections are going.
They're going in November.
In November. Is we in November?
Yeah, we, we will have that broadcast in November right here. Um, it's, it's gonna be an interesting one in LaFollet. Um, Careful, it's looking like it's gonna be a bunch of unimposed seats.
Yeah.
But, Caden.
Caden, what, what did you see out of the polls today, Caden? Was it busy in, in the polling session you were at?
It was, it was not really too busy. You could tell everybody was ready to go home. It was time to go home and they got all the votes in and all the results that they needed. Um, I sent Kelly Jo and you some votes. Camera wasn't working very well, but it got through.
Yeah, um, some of those smaller precincts, it's hard to get a good serve. You can serve. Which precinct was it?
Pinecrest.
We're out there.
Pinecrest is way out there.
It's very, yes.
It is. It's a good thing you didn't have to run it.
But thank you for doing that, Caden.
Oh, you're welcome. Really, really helped us out.
Now, Caden, did you get to vote in this election?
I did.
Now, now what precinct did you vote in?
Valley View Elementary School.
Now, did you vote early or today?
I voted today. I voted today.
How crowded was it today while you were out there?
Uh, it wasn't too busy when I was out there, but you could tell there was a lot of people that did come in. People were calling in.
We got some-
I have some early voting here from Alan Miller, the election commission.
Okay, here we go. Okay, here we go.
Before you go there, George Hooks wants to know how bad he's getting beat in the road superintendent race, I think George is 1951 to 1.
You're behind George. Ryan Cummings in the fifth district?
This is.
Early voting.
Early voting. Are we going fifth district school board?
Fifth district school board, Ryan Cummings. This is the first picture I've got here. 333 votes for Ryan Cummings, 116 for Bob Walton.
Think we can safely call this one even without Oak Valley and Haversham?
Absentee voting, 16 for Ryan Cummings, 2 for Bob Walton. So that makes a total of 349 to 118, Ryan Cummings to Bob Walton. That is early in absentee voting.
He said 118?
118.
So this one is over, folks, there's no way white Oak, Oak Valley and Haversham are returning. There's not enough people that voted all three of those precincts. So we can declare Ryan Cummings the winner of the fifth district school board.
The early voting, school board, District One. Sherry Chapman, 204. Lisa Fields, 171.
This is going to be close.
That is early in absentee together.
And we, we still have outstanding precincts on this one.
Still have Dimory out there for sure, and that's.
We still got Wells Springs, so I couldn't read the pictures.
School Board, District Two. Brent Lester, 185. Marvin T. Ruthford, 150.
Wow. So the early voting was close on that one. I mean, Brent has won, but Marvin had a very strong early voting showing. So Brent Lester will retain his second district school board seat.
School Board, District Three. Jessica Childress, 308. Brandon Johnson, 366.
Brandon Johnson will take the third district school board seat.
By about 200 and some odd votes on that.
About half what I told him I saw he went by, but I like to pay this ego.
School Board, District Four. Josh James, 309 votes. Jamie Wheeler, 292 votes.
It's close.
It's close.
Clinchmore is going to be telling.
Yes.
Very close. Did we, did we lose our feed?
No.
Viewership just dropped way off, and I got a text message asking what happened to the feed.
Is it?
It's showing live with me.
It's live, but I've got it.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm going to have to start again, I guess. Hold on, guys. Should be back up. We should be back up.
Fans, we may have lost you for a second. We have a very tight fourth district school board race. Clinchmore could be deciding here. Jamie Wheeler has 587 votes. Josh James has, um, we clicked off. 568. John, do you have more from the early voting?
That was all the early voting.
What about the road secret? Is that all he's sent so far?
Let me see if I can find it, he's sent a lot. Okay, now I found early voting. Assessor of Property, Brandon Parton, 1,771.
We can call this one, I believe.
I found that again, but it was very, very heavily in Brandon Parton's favor. Marie Ayer, 707. Clark Ford, 97, so that's a figure, Brandon Parton is your assessor of property.
Overwhelmingly so.
We are still trying to get Alan Miller to, he's still trying to get the Dimory precinct for us, which will probably decide the first district here.
As will Clinchmore and the fourth.
We asked him about Clinchmore, and it will probably decide the fourth district.
So, but we're still.
Are outstanding right now, and Al says he is waiting at the Election Commission for those results.
At least he's in the drive now.
Which that makes sense, maybe that's possible.
Yeah, but I got wet, so.
Well, Alan had to wait outside until all the precincts closed too, so he won't have to shower tomorrow. What we can call, as you see right there, is the District Two School Board Race, as Brent Lester has defeated Marvin Ruthford, 458 to 299.
For completion's sake, Ron Dilbeck received 2,203 early votes and absentee votes together.
A strong showing for Ron Dilbeck. It's like John said, that's such a specialized office, it and Sheriff have very specific requirements. School Board, District One, we are waiting on Dimory and Wells Springs. It is a 15 vote lead for Lisa Fields at the moment.
I think Lisa probably should do well in Dimory, that's part of her home territory, and Sherry, I'm not sure how many votes are in Wells Springs, but that valley territory is usually favorable for her, so it's anybody's race right now, and.
We can also make an announcement that's unrelated to the election, but there are trees down on Cedar Creek Road, and it is blocking the road, and obviously in both directions, so if you live in that area, just be aware of that.
And please, folks, if you're out there in weather like this, drive with caution. It's cliche, it's their catchphrase, but if there's standing water, turn around, don't drown.
And stay away from power lines or trees down, because, you know, that's extremely dangerous.
And even if a power line has no juice to it, residual power is, we've angered Sophia, and she's throwing stuff at us. But if you see a downed power line, call it in or report it on the LUB app, do not go near it.
We have a viewer asking about the District Three. Looks like that Brandon Johnson leads with 751 votes, with Jessica Childress behind with 511.
Now, Jessica, Jessica did well.
Do we have anything outstanding there?
No, this one's over. Brandon Johnson will be your third district school board member.
We have somebody asking about District Five, can we get a switch over to District Five?
That will be Ryan Cummings, he has won quite handily over Bob Walton. Great showing for Ryan in District Five.
And again, though there are three districts outstanding, there's not enough people to vote in those districts to swing it.
And that's, that's a, you know, a 400 vote lead.
I mean, it would, Bob did teach at Wensley, and he does live in that area, so he may do pretty well there, but Ryan ran strong in every other district so far, so that trend likely continued.
And you notice in the Lefolent section, Bob did well, even though it was a small total, because Bob was also an outstanding principal at Lefolent Elementary for a number of years, and he recently retired, and again, Bob felt like he had more to give to the school system, just for a different direction.
It's all good candidates so far for the school board, can't really go wrong with any of them. Lisa, Josh James, and Brent Lester have done a great job while they've been in there. Our new candidates, I feel like, our new members will do a great job as well.
Let's see, we know Brandon Johnson's going to be the winner.
And Brent, we know is the winner in District Two.
And, let's see, District Four. Still got a close race there with one district left to report. District Five, we're pretty confident.
Now.
Yeah, boring, boring, just really strange results from those smaller districts.
Now, I will say this about Clinchmore. They don't necessarily, there's not enough people for them to actually vote big, but those people are passionate, the ones, there are certain people who always vote there, and I don't know the area enough to make a call either way.
What are the total numbers right now on that, those really close first district school board and fourth district school board races?
439 to 424 in District One, with Lisa Fields leading by 15 votes, with two districts still to report, or two precincts still to report, and then District Four is a nine vote swing, no, 19, 19 vote swing.
With just Clinchmore left.
And Clinchmore, Clinchmore votes an average of about 20, so Clinchmore can swing it.
That's right.
Now, I think the most I've seen come out of Clinchmore ever is 50. But again, those are good folks, they're passionate about things, and, you know, hopefully both candidates went up there and talked to some folks. Because those folks can feel really underrepresented at times, and John can relate to that too. As where John lives is in the fifth district, but literally a stone's throw away from the Lefolent city limits.
Okay, let's look at some of these numbers I just got, I don't know from Al, that you get as well.
I've got Wells Springs for school board over here.
Okay.
Wells Springs would be District.
One.
One. Okay, there we go.
Okay, we have Sherry Chapman, 23. Lisa Fields, 42. Ron Dilbeck, 62. We do not have the property assessor at this time on that.
Man, man, Dimory, Dimory, it's, it's so close. Lisa Fields lead group just a little bit there, and I don't know how many people normally vote out Dimory.
Yeah, for all the folks at home that are asking about the Lefolent City and Lefolent Mayor, and all that's done in November.
It will be the same time as your presidential state reps and US Congress and Senate elections. And you can still qualify for those positions, you've still got two weeks to pick up a petition and turn it in. And as of right now, my, my good friend, and I'm happy that she's looking like the one to take my place, Pat Donahue, has qualified for my seat that I'm not seeking reelection for in Carroll.
We can also say too, that District 36, Tennessee House of Representatives, Dennis Powers is running unopposed tonight, so congratulations to Dennis.
Yes, absolutely, and look, I've been blessed as a member of Carroll City Council, that I've got to work with Dennis on projects. Dennis was a tremendous, and Senator Yeager were both tremendous assets when working on Carroll Cares Playground, and they actually helped us secure a $600,000 grant to do Phase Two. That I will watch from the sidelines on.
What are our vote totals currently in the first district school board race? Let's see what this matches up with what I was just seeing.
I'm just updating some graphics here so that we can get a.
So it looks better on the screen.
Yeah, so folks can see whatever.
We have Melman Kitts joining us, of course, he's, he's an important representative of our county commission, and this is his home district, we're in the second district right now. Melman, welcome to the broadcast.
Thank you, Pat.
So which, which vote totals were you in?
The first district school board.
481 for Lisa Fields and 447 for Sherry Chapman, with Dimory left to report.
So Melman, I'm. Obviously, you didn't have to run this time. What trends did you see in this particular, especially school board race, as, you know, they were all contested seats? Now, again, obviously, the second is your district, but I know that you, you're a student in politics, and you observed the entire county.
Right, thank you, Pat. What I, I knew that every race was going to be tied, I didn't know much about the fifth district, how that race was going to turn out, I didn't know, really not familiar with that area as much than the rest, but I knew every race would be tight, and it would be, and it looks like it's going to be coming right down to the, to the end on several of them, or I think the, you already called District Two.
Two and three have been called. Two and three are complete. You want to add Brent Lester?
Brent Lester at 458, and Marvin Ruthford, 299, and then in the third, you've got Brandon Johnson, 751, and 511, okay.
And again, there's no secret, Brandon Johnson is one of my dearest friends in the world. I was out with him some, I helped him put some signs, I didn't go door knocking with him, but when the people would stop and talk to him, it was, it was always so positive. You know, he, he has some great ideas, some of which I think he'll be able to implement immediately, some of which may take some time and some work, but nobody puts ideas into reality better than Brandon Johnson.
Still waiting on the, on the Dimory results and the Clinchmore results. Al says that apparently at the Election Commission, they can't get, I don't understand this, but they can't get individual precinct results.
We won't be getting Dimory on the.
We're probably not getting Clinchmore.
Yeah.
So, as of right now, District One and District Four are too close to call. I think it's slightly easier to say Jamie may win District Four, just because of the numbers, I know that you usually voted Clinchmore, but man, if they turned out everybody, Josh could easily take that lead back. So, as of right now, let me text a couple people, see if I can find anything out.
Someone's asking what part of Cedar Creek has trees down?
Do not know all. The only information that we were sent was that it was Cedar Creek Road, so unfortunately, it could be at any point on that road, but.
As of right now, I'm. Just.
Are we feeling pretty good about calling Ryan Cummings?
I think it's very safe to call that one, because again, that's almost 400, that's, it's over 400 votes.
Trying to just get the totals for the first and the fourth district school board at this point. The latest information you sent, we actually have a further update than what the Election Commission had, which was, what Al just sent us from the Election Commission, only showed 90 votes cast on election day in the first district, so we know that there have been much more, many more votes cast than that.
See, I'm going to text around and try to, and the problem with Clinchmore is you don't get good cell service there, I don't know who else I haven't texted.
Go back through the totals right now in those two districts. Lisa did increase her lead a little bit, I think, with that last first district turnout from Wells Springs.
See, well, let me slide out and make a couple of phone calls, and see if I can find out anyone from, that's that microphone that I've hit my head on four times. Melman, if you want to slide in to take my seat, I'm going to, I'm going to call a certain little redheaded man and see if he knows the Clinchmore results.
They're going to let you move into the side here, and eventually we're going to get some of the ladies back in here.
Come on in, Melman. Some other state elections, and US elections in the Republican primary, the state Republican primary, we don't have any information on the Marsha Blackburn versus Tris Whittle. We do know that Tim Burchett was running unopposed as well, so Tim, Tim Burchett will win reelection to the US House of Representatives, District Two. Chuck Fleishman, also running unopposed, will win the US House of Representatives, District Three. And we've got Tina Hedrick versus Ken Yeager, we don't have any information on that. And again, Dennis Powers will win State House Representative, unopposed for District 36.
Al and Dana Miller are reporting that people are now starting to roll in from their, with their equipment, of course, with the tallies from their precincts at the election headquarters, so hopefully, folks, this will be wrapping up here pretty soon.
What are our totals currently in District Five, school board?
District Five, there's a pretty good lead there, but we've got still three districts that have not reported.
Anything can change.
Or three precincts.
What are the vote total numbers?
We got 591 for Ryan Cummings and 181 for Bob Walton.
We now have four to five trees down near the bridge.
Wow.
Dimory, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So everybody be safe out there tonight, definitely be safe.
Okay, guys, um. Thank you, Bob Walton, for sending this, I'm going to hand this. I'm going to hand this off to John and let maybe John read that there, and thank you, Bob, for sending that. We know that you are going through a difficult time right now, he just lost his sister. I know he has a lot of family in, and he sent a very nice, a nice message.
Yes, Bob, Bob did send a nice message, yeah.
Yes, Bob, Bob did send a nice message. He, he said he would like to congratulate Ryan Cummins on being the new school board member in the fifth district. I appreciate the decorum of the race and wish him the best of luck as our board member. So very classy message from Bob who has, has some sickness in his family right now. So Bob, we hope your family is doing better. And he does concede that Ryan has won the election. And you know, congratulations, Ryan. You did do, you did a fine job there. We're just waiting on those final totals. Al said that people are now getting to the election commission and bringing them in. So far, the total he's been giving us where we've gotten live updates from the side, actually, his numbers are lower at the election commission than the numbers we have posted already. But those two, fourth and first district races are outstanding, but Lisa Fields is ahead right now in the first with just Demery to come in. And there's some bad weather out in that area, so that may delay things too. And then that Stony Fork area, a few votes over there, but man, everyone I'm counting these close races.
Yeah, certainly going to be a close vote difference in the school board District Four. And Clinchmore is going to be the deciding factor on that, a long shot.
These first district races, county commission and everything, just they're really close every time. So there was county commission, one vote difference in the last county commission race.
Like Patrick had said before, that, that single digit vote difference in between the General Sessions Judge last vote or last election, that was a, that was a big deal too.
Just a little off topic really quick. Just want to make an announcement. Hopefully get our scrimmage Saturday night, six o'clock. It's a big day for Coach Pemberton and the staff and our football team as we take this first step of the new journey. I'm very excited to see Cougar Nation come out and support us. We, as the staff members, we expect a, a, a great crowd. And we're expecting fans to really support us and we are excited to see what they, what they bring for us Saturday night.
We're opening the new Pemberton era, the official game type action, and I'll be on the sidelines looking forward to it.
Should be an exciting season. It's going to be a little different than what we're used to, but I tell you what, we've got a good group of kids and I wouldn't trade any one of them for any around me, but they work hard, got a lot of grit, a lot of, a lot of grit on that team. And looking forward to this football season.
And a great chaplain.
Yeah, a great chaplain too. We've got new chaplain.
Sure, that basketball chaplain is also good too. We're still waiting on the final totals, votes.
And I'm about to take a call here from, I believe, Maria Ayers. Hello. Hey, I'm brave. I'm going to go ahead and lay the phone down. I'm going to put you on speaker and you'll be able to be heard, okay? Thank you, sweetheart. All right, everybody, this is Marie Ayers. Marie, you're live. I'm just going to turn it up there and I believe the folks at home can hear you as well. And you can hear everybody that'll be talking with you there. We appreciate you calling in.
All right. Thank you all. After we braved the heat today, I'm not, not going to get out in the storms, but I want to thank everybody. Mostly the Lord above put me into this endeavor. He gave me the strength, the finances to make it through. Secondly, there's so many people to thank. If I started trying to name them, I'm sure I wouldn't get them all. So I'll try to do a Facebook post later, but I do want to thank my supportive husband, Cody. He has set up sign after sign after sign. And some of them, we had to put up two or three times due to the storms. And of course, there's always a little basilism, but if anybody picked up a sign like at one of our events and come by the office, if you've got that in your yard or wherever, you're welcome to drop it off at our office. That's 1165 Tostring Road in Jackspur. Or if you'll just give me a call or a text, whatever is easier, I'll be happy to stop by and grab it. I just definitely don't, don't leave anything across the county like littering. We'll be out tomorrow all day because of the larger signs. But special thanks to everybody that's supported me, braved the heat. We got out and voted. But ultimately, you know, the voters have spoke and that's good. I support, support that. But thank everybody and God bless Campbell County.
Marie, this is Patrick Peely. I just stepped on here. I want to congratulate you on running a good race. I know the results weren't what you'd hoped, but.
Honestly, it's fun.
You gave, you gave everybody, you know, the shock for a change.
I gave the people an option.
Yes.
And people have complained for years. We need change. We need this. We need that. And the people don't want change. So I mean, there's some that do, and I don't mean that, that way, but the people have spoken and I, I will pass all the information I have off to the current assessor and I do hope that he'll, you know, continue and look into the hotel motel tax, which is that position's, you know, duty, whether they think it is or not. I hope he'll continue and hopefully alleviate the burden on some of us, you know, local, just the land-based people.
And again, just kudos for you for putting yourself out there and, you know, like I said, giving folks an option.
I appreciate that. And we kept it clean. We didn't, you know, nothing negative as far as that. It was all about the statistics and the job itself and the duties that it entailed and, you know, I'll still be able to help and do whatever I can to help the county.
I appreciate you.
All right, guys. Thank you all very much.
Marie, thank you. You did an outstanding job.
Thank you. Have a good one.
I have you too, honey. Bye-bye.
Still waiting on school board final totals. We do have the final total for the property assessor's office. Brandon Parton, 3,032.
Are you saying that's the final total from the?
From the election commission, this is the final total of election day and early voting and absentee voting all together. Brandon Parton, 3,032. Marie Ayers, 1,296. Clark Ford, 182. That should be with all precincts reporting from what I understand.
And you know, with Clark Ford not having any signs or any campaigning at all, I would say that he still did fairly well for somebody that didn't campaign or put any signs, so.
He gave the folks a third option in case they wanted to go that way.
That's right.
I'm going to roll another, so we can get back, back in here. I'm going to roll another chair around here. Guys, just bear with us here. We're putting a lot of people in here for a minute and.
Stress my wigs for a second.
We're just wiggling a bit here. Thank you for sticking with us, folks. We appreciate it. We're going to get you some answers soon.
Still waiting on those, those few polling precincts.
District One and District Four still with one precinct each to report, and they're very, very tight races. They could swing either way. We've got Lisa Fields leading Sherry Chapman, 481 to 447 in the first district school board race. And Jamie Wheeler leading Josh James, 587 to 568, with just Clinchmore to report. And someone's asking what the, what the vote total on Brandon Parton was. 3,032 votes, although that, that comes in lower than what we had tabulated from the information that we were getting from the polling stations.
With still precincts left to go as well, so.
That could be. That could be the margin of error there. But for those of you that weren't on, we did just get a concession call from Marie Ayers conceding the race to Brandon Parton. So Brandon Parton, we have called, will be, will remain property assessor.
A long tenure for, for Brandon Parton, a very, very many terms in office for him.
And again, when this property reassessment came out, Brandon went above and beyond to explain how that worked.
Yes, definitely. And there was a lot of people that didn't completely understand that that was not something that he had done. It was, it was mandated by the state. And I think that, I'm glad that the voters also realized that as well and that they didn't hold it against him.
So District One, District Four. No, I'm going to talk about races that we've got left.
I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk about Brent Lester for a minute, District Two. Brent and I go way, way back. Brent and I played ball together. Brent has a lot of irons in the fire and still manages to represent the second district very well. You know, he's, he's dedicated. He's, he's been a coach. He's, you know, had two kids going, that have gone through the school system with Bella coming into her senior year. His wife, Lisa.
Former county commissioner.
Former county commissioner and, and an educator herself. So Brent has actually got to see it from multiple angles. Like a lot of people can see it as a parent. Some people can see it as the spouse of an educator. Brent, a few, very few people get to see it from a coach's perspective, and Brent seen it from all three. And that's one of the things that make, make Brent Lester a great leader for Ayers School.
We've got a, some more information that's in. We're just getting some things verified before we release it. And it's a good little chunk here.
What are our total votes in District One School Board?
We've got 481 for Lisa Fields and 447 for Sherry Chapman.
Okay. I just got this from Al, the election commission. Sherry Chapman, 501 votes. Lisa Fields, 502 votes.
Oh, wow. 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 One vote.
And folks, if you'll remember, I mentioned earlier, this happened in District One in the county commission last time. Everybody talked about that judge race being separated by nine votes, but we literally had a race last time separated by ones. And if you ever think your vote doesn't count, I want you to look at those totals right there. What are our District Four totals right now?
Jamie Wheeler with 587, leading Josh James at 568.
So that's the numbers we still have. So Clinchmore still not getting into the election commission yet.
They're probably having difficulties getting across the.
Trees may have blown across the road in that.
Rough road, rough road.
That road's rough under good circumstances. So this race especially is still yet to be decided.
Do you have any idea what, how many usually votes in the Clinchmore area?
It usually ranges between six and 18. But again, I've seen as many as almost 50 votes come out of there, like high 40s.
So a lot of those people in, in the Clinchmore, Stony Fork area, they, like you said, they're passionate and they kind of stick together as well. So that'll be, that'll be a big turning point.
So John, can, can we get, is that the final vote totals on District One? Were those on, on that District One School Board race? Was that the final vote totals?
That's what I'm trying to find out from Al right now, but we had everything but Demery in and the numbers changed.
To about what Demery would vote?
So that would suggest to me that that should have been Demery coming in right there. I'm not 100% on that. I'm waiting on Al to confirm that, but our fifth district total didn't change, but our, pardon me, our fourth district total didn't change. It was Clinchmore's not in, but the, the first district numbers did change while we were waiting on Demery there. So as of right now, we're going to call Lisa Clausenfield the projected winner until we get the final confirmation.
Projected by one vote.
Again, I'm going to talk about this race too. I've known both of these candidates so long. Lisa and I went to high schools with them. You know, we've, and we've been friends ever since. Sherry Chapman, coach, educator, athletic director. I've dealt with Sherry on multiple levels. Sherry's very passionate. Sherry's a very strong leader. And you know, just looking at those totals, there were a lot of people that saw that as well. And that's one of those races I hate that somebody has to listen.
Yeah, I agree. I definitely agree. And I would say that as well in the fourth district, you know, Pat, that's where me and you range from. And that's one where, you know, I, I think that both of the candidates were, were awesome. They both brought a wealth of experience and leadership and, you know, working with both of them on different, different aspects. And I think that that will be a close one.
Well, you know, again, Josh, Josh has been a coach. Josh has two, two, one that's in the system, one that'll be in the system. One that's, will be in the system in a few years. So he has, he has skin in the game. And we're, we're waiting to hear from Brandon Parton.
Hello?
Hello, Brandon.
Hey, sweetheart.
Hey, you are live on air.
All right. You should have told me that before you picked up the phone.
Brandon Parton, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You remain property assessor. What would you, what would you like to say to the folks that voted for you tonight?
Guys, I, I am humbled. You know, we, we strived to run a clean campaign through one of the most difficult years of my life. We, we tried to run on our accomplishments in the office, our records in the office. And, you know, the, the voters spoke tonight and, you know, I, I am forever humbled and, and forever indebted to them. You know, I, I've always run this office for the property owners. I've, I've always said that. I, I may be an elected official. I, I may get a check from county government, but I don't work for the government. I work for the property owners of Campbell County. And, and even ones that's not the property owners that may be coming in looking forward to buy a home or a piece of property. I work for everybody in this county, supporters, non-supporters. It's equal, it's equal with me. And I, I look forward to serving this wonderful county another four years.
One, one thing that I gave you credit for the entire broadcast is how well you're able to explain things to people.
Yes. And that, and that comes with the knowledge of the office itself. You know, this, this is one of the most important offices in county government, but it's also one of the most complicated. It's not something that, when I started here 21 years ago, that I came in knowing what was going on. I didn't.
You know, it, it's, it's funny. We were, of course, Ron Dilbeck obviously is going back in unopposed. But you know, it's funny how his, his office has very specific requirements.
Yes.
Like specific certifications and stuff, whereas your office, I could run for it.
Right.
And I would have, I would have to learn, I would have to learn from scratch. So, you know, and having that knowledge is very important. That's, that's one of the things that make you a good office holder and good representative of the citizens.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate those words. I really truly do because that's what I strive to do. I want to be one of those that, and, and this is not saying anything negative towards anyone at all, but I want to be able to be considered on the same level. I don't want somebody, I, I've never desired to be honored or respected or anything like that because I work for somebody. I don't have people that work for me. I work for somebody. And that is the property owners and the taxpayers of Campbell County. I'm not any better than anybody else. I, I wear the same boots and blue jeans that I wore in 2008. Not the same ones, but you know, because I wore them out, but, but I, I still, you know, I'm not a, a dress slacks and love for kind of guy. Because I am who I am. I'm the same person that ran 2008 and I'm the same person now in 2024. I, I work for the property owners. I do not think of myself as some high statured person. I understand who I am. I'm the man that can do the job for the people that needs it done. And with this office being as important as it is, I mean, we basically control the purse for the county commission's budget. You know, our figures is what dictates how much money they get, more or less. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm just humbled tonight, man. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm just humbled tonight, man. I can't, I can't say it enough. And, and, you know, I, I lost one of my biggest supporters this year. And I know that he, I know he would be tickled to death right now. You know, I'm looking at the lightning in the sky. I'm standing out on the back porch of my house right now. And, you know, it's just like, hey, there's a celebration going on someplace else. And, and, you know, I thank the Good Lord above for the opportunity to do what I do. Because I know, you know, if, if the Good Lord wanted me there, I'd be there. And if he didn't want me there, then I wouldn't be there. I am nobody without him. Absolutely nobody without him. But like I said, you know, I, I lost my biggest supporter this year. And that's, that's tragic in my eyes because he wasn't just my biggest supporter, he was my best friend. But through the tragedies and the turmoil this year, we've come out victorious. And, and I look forward to getting the ground running.
I mean, it's a prime example that adversity introduces a man to himself. And you were able to get past a critical loss in your heart, and you're back in office. So, once again, congratulations.
Hey Brandon, Brandon, this is Dwayne Kidd's here. I just want to congratulate you, brother. You know, losing a, a parent or losing a big supporter like we did, I went through the same thing in my campaign. It's like a big, you're on a big roller coaster going 100 mile an hour.
Amen.
And, but when it's coming in to stop right now and everything worked out all right. And it's, I just want to congratulate you and, on your victory and, and sorry to hear about Gary there. Thoughts and prayers with you and the family.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And I look forward to working with you.
You too, Brandon.
Brandon, buddy, we appreciate it. And thanks for taking the time to, to talk to the audience tonight. Okay, buddy?
Hey, thank you for giving me the opportunity, Kelly.
All right, honey. You have a good evening. Go celebrate.
Appreciate you all. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
We, we do have some winning school board candidates in the house. And I'm going to step aside right here.
I think, yeah, we're going to squeeze Lisa in right here.
Lisa, Lisa's been here for a bit, and she...
I want you to squeeze right past her and go right through to side Patrick, and Dwayne can get on the other side of you or, or...
According to Al, right now at the Election Audit Commission, Clinchmore, White Oak, and at the Election Commission, the Fall Elementary, the only outstanding precincts. So that was Dimory vote that came in, and Lisa did win by one vote, it appears. And so we're waiting on, especially Clinchmore, because that race is so tight in the fourth. We have called Ron Cummings already for the fifth district. And we're, the Election Commission is waiting on the Fall Elementary, but we had the results sent to us by, by one of our workers already.
Now, before we talk elections, my advice to you is when you leave here, you go buy lottery tickets.
I don't know about that.
Well, I mean, you know, you're, you're riding a heater right now.
Absolutely.
One vote.
One vote.
Closest, closest race of the evening. What would you like to say to the folks out there in the first district?
I want to, first of all, thank the Lord, because my prayer was that the Lord's will be done. And if this is his will, then, then I shall work hard for four more years, and I'm thankful to do so. I thank my family and for, for working hard with me today in the heat, for helping, and it was a lot. And I want to say, to thank Ms. Chapman for running a clean race. I think a lot of Ms. Chapman, she's a good lady. I said she's always been good to me. She's always been good to my kids. And, you know, this is not easy. It, it's not easy. And, and she ran a clean race. I tried to run a clean race as well, and I appreciate that. And I, I am happy to work hard for the students, for teachers. And I'm just, I'm thankful that, that you all chose me. And thanks to all my voters, and we'll, we'll have fun the next four years. Now, we have lots of things that, that we are wanting to, to get done. And hopefully, we can, we can come together as a board, as a 10-unit board. And we can get things done that need to be done for the betterment of our schools, our teachers, our students, our community. I mean...
Do you have any specific goals going in? I mean, obviously, you have projects in the works. Is there something maybe that beyond those projects, it's a personal goal for you as a school board member?
I have one thing I've, I've kind of been working on a little bit. It's, it's tough, because I don't know how well it will be received. But I think that we need a voters ed class in our high schools. We live on Norris Lake. We have 800 miles of shoreline here. And I strongly feel like, you know, these kids get out here and, and they're wanting to drive the jet skis, they're wanting to drive the boats. They need education on this. It's just like a driver's ed class.
We have driver's ed.
Exactly. It's like a driver's ed class. I think we need a voters ed class. I mean, there's a lot of things working, you know, that, that will be hard to do if, if I can get people to help with that. I would like to see that happen in the next four years. I think our students would benefit from it. And, I mean, they already have a class to where they can get their license, but I'm talking about a voters education class. What do you think about that?
I, as a student at Campbell County High School, I, I believe that that would greatly benefit all of us. You know, I've turned down job offers to not having a voting license and just not having the time to go get one. So if I had my foot in the door with a voters ed class, that would be phenomenal. And, you know, it won't be in my high school career, but I would love for other high school students to achieve that. And for families that move here from out of town, you know, their main, their main objective is the lake. So that's very important to them. And so we're not only taking care of, of us that are, are from here, but us, our friends that are moving in here as well.
Yes, I think so. So that's, that's one thing, you know, so I'm, I'm, hopefully, we can get to work on that, so.
And, like I said, in your tenure, as, as a board as a whole, I, I've seen great accomplishments, both sides of the mountain. And here's just hoping that the next four years are even more successful.
Thank you, Patrick. I believe we are one county. I believe that with all my heart. I love all the kids, all the students. I, I work for all of them. When I'm elected to work in the first district, because that's my district. But like I said, we serve on a 10-unit board. And we have one county to work on, to improve, and to make better. And I challenge all the school board members to do that. The ones that are sitting on the board now and the new ones coming on, we can do it. We can do it.
So, speaking of new folks...
Just sit tight right there, Lisa. We can bring Brandon on in. We can bring him at the same time.
I, I was going to make you give me a hug, but...
Brandon, congratulations, sir.
Hey, look forward to serving with you. I really, really do.
All right.
Patrick, I do not look forward to a hug from you, but I appreciate the sentiment.
Brandon Johnson, congratulations. You now represent the third district. You're filling the shoes of Johnny Burge, who had a great tenure on the school board. Talk to our voters.
Yeah, well, first, Pat, one, I want to say how great it is to be with the Volunteer Toms. If, for all the Toms viewers, I am normally one of these talking heads.
November.
Yeah, so I'll probably be back in November if Kelly Joe has me. But I also am glad to concede my seat to Isaac as our, our up and coming talking head. So it's, it's great. To me, the Volunteer Toms is family. So thank you all for everything you do in our community to make such a difference. And the way you support our teachers and students and faculty like I want to. To the voters of the third district, thank you. I, I'll be honest, I didn't feel super confident going into today. And I was very unsure. I'd never thought that I would win with 60% of the vote. So I'm just completely humbled and flattered and honored that the voters trusted me. And since day one, I have said that I'm running to represent the students that I feel like nobody else is. The core group of that is the students that I work with through our Special Olympics program. The students and the kids who play on the Carable Cares Playground, that, that they're, that's their only opportunity for an inclusive play space. That's the population I want to fight for. But I want to expand that even further. Any student, any faculty, teacher, staff, who feels like nobody's a voice for them, I want to be that voice. And I am so excited to serve with our board. I think we have a wonderful board. I'm excited to serve with Lisa. So it's going to be a really, really exciting four years for me, and I promise I won't let you down.
Obviously, I knew about this decision before most. I, I know how you agonized over this. I know how much thought you put into it.
Yeah, it was, it was tough for me, Pat. I didn't turn my petition in, so they were due at noon. And as Lisa knows, you have to take a copy of a diploma with you to turn it in. Well, I'd forgotten that, because I held the petition for so long, just unsure what's due, thinking about, praying about it, asking my family, hey, what do I do? And I was just really conflicted. And there was one singular phone call that I had that pushed me that, the day before they were due, from a, no, I'm not sure this is the right path to me, to, no, we're going to do this. And so from day one, once that petition was turned in, I was 100%, but I almost forgot to turn my diploma. And thankfully, I had one of my collegiate diplomas on the wall, ripped it off, got back about 15 minutes before petitions were due. But, yeah, so I, I was sweating it then. So since then, you know, we've, we've been running a campaign, a really aggressive campaign, getting out, knocking doors, talking to folks, reaching every single voter we could. We hit almost 2,000 doors in the third district, which is a lot of doors. And I can't thank my family, my friends, the supporters, the folks who liked my Facebook status, or the folks who prayed for me without me even knowing. Thank you for believing in me. And if you didn't vote for me, that's okay. I still am excited to represent and support you as well. And I hope that over the next few years, I can earn your confidence as well. You know, Brandon, Lisa, as a student in the Campbell County school system, I'm so excited to, to have you all on the board. You know, Lisa, you've helped me in, in many things in my past. And Brandon, you've been there too. So now just to have that support from the board even more, and like you said, the, the kids that don't have a voice, that's, that's who we really need to care about.
And not to interrupt there, but Steve Wallin did send me a message and said, tell Lisa I would be happy to do the voters ed in the schools. Thank you. That's awesome.
Chief, Chief Wallin's a great guy.
We did get an update from the Election Commission. Unfortunately, no Clinchmore in yet. But Lisa, you actually got some additional votes that I wasn't expecting. You actually won 565 to 513 as a final total.
Okay.
From Dimory?
I thought Dimory was in, but I've just got the official final total for everyone but Clinchmore and the Fall Elementary School is now reported. Lisa, 565. Sherri Chapman, 513.
Now, again, super close, super close still. But congratulations again to both of you. Coach Chapman, and she will always be Coach Chapman to me. Since she, she, she ran a clean race. I think you all may have spent the least on signs in history in a school board race. I appreciate that.
Well, I, I had another idea what I would like to have done with the money for my signs, but... I was advised not to, but it, it was, I, I would rather it go to the students. Because you all know me, that's just, that's just how I do.
And it's tough in these...
It is, it is. And I, I just, you know, yeah, it can be spent on the students and, and the teachers, you know, I just...
And you two have the most geographically different districts possible. You have a district that only makes sense on a map, whereas you had a top focused. So, you know, you had even more challenges to get out the vote, because though they're all together on a map, Wells Springs and Pine Crest and Coolidge and all that's...
It's a lot of territory to cover.
Very different by all means.
But I will say this, I love the first district, and I am so thankful that I live in the first district. All the people are great. I mean, they're, they're just wonderful people. And if you know people from the first district, you, you know, they are just, I, I'm blessed to, to have the first district as my voters. And I'm just, I'm, I'm humbled. And I would ask that when I said I would humbly ask for your vote and support and your prayers, you know. Today was a hard day for me, not, not because of our election, but my dad always helped. I was like Brandon, my dad always helped me. And he wasn't there today, and that was hard. It was hard. But everybody else pitched in and helped, and, and we got it done.
Yeah, that Scott guy's pretty all right.
Yeah, he worked hard. He worked hard. And then Hayden, I have to give a plug to my son Hayden. He, and my nephew Garrett and Hayden, they worked hard. And I'm thankful for them and my sisters and my mom and my aunts and Tyler. We had people helping and...
There's a lot of you Clausens.
There's a bunch, yes.
Fourth district is finally in.
Fourth district total.
Your mama, we've been waiting for.
We got these results from Josh James himself, that he had someone in Clinchmore. He said that Jamie got 15, and he got four in Clinchmore. That should put the totals at 602 to 572.
So Jamie Wheeler...
By 30 votes.
By 30 votes will be your new fourth district representative. Before I talk about Jamie, shout out to Josh James. You have worked hard for this school system in two different districts. You genuinely care. And even as not an elected official now, I ask you to still be part of this school system. I want you to still, you know, support these folks. I want you to still be somebody that maybe if somebody needs some advice, they can come to. So Josh, way to, way to represent us for a number of years. To Jamie Wheeler. Again, you're somebody I've known for a long time. And we spent a lot of time in that press box at Jack's Row together when you were principal there. Same thing with you at Campbell County High School. I know how much you love education. I know how much you love these kids. And I feel like that you are going to be an excellent representative of my home district. So, and Josh, thank you for the Clinchmore results. John, did we get final on District Five?
District Five, the final appears to be 703 for Ron Cummings. 300 for Bob Walton.
Now, Brandon, you actually are in a unique position, because at one point, you worked with Jamie Wheeler as student body president. And now you all are going to sit as equals on the school board.
Yeah, and I have a great deal of respect for Josh James and Jamie Wheeler. I've gotten to work with both. I consider both very dear friends. But I have had a lot more time actually working with Jamie. So she was high school principal my senior year. So that may be a little unique dynamic shift, but I'm really confident that we're going to work together. I'm just excited to serve. There's not a single person on the school board I'm not excited to serve with. And I'm looking forward to having opportunities to grow and work together to help our students, Pat.
It, it's, the dynamic changed quite a bit, you know. Three completely new members. Three members that have never served a county elected office. Right, I know you served some elected offices in college.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand you were at one point the Attorney General for the Tennessee Interscholastic Legislature.
If you can't tell, Patrick and I are very good friends, if that wasn't made evident.
But, you know, this is different.
Yeah.
This is a whole new ballgame for you, and you've got a lot to learn.
Yep. Well, and it's going to be intimidating, you know. One of the things that I did as soon as I started to run for office is I called every current school board member, Lisa included, and asked for any advice, any tips, you know. Some I think that I may agree with more than others, but all of them I want to be friends with. And so, you know, I'm very open to learning. I'm going to be the new kid. I'm going to be the youngest person on the school board right now. And I'm, I'm, I'm excited to serve, Pat. There's no other way to say it than that. And I'm excited to work with, with Isaac. It'll be his senior year.
Yes, sir.
And he, he's a huge leader in our Campbell County school system already. So I know we're going to see really, really exciting things from him as well. And let me tell you what, folks, there's great things coming out of the Campbell County school system. From, from all grades, all students, we're doing great things, and it's great to be from Campbell County.
And I think we're about to hear from Jamie Wheeler by phone, but we have all of our winners in. Brandon Parton and Ron Dilbeck will remain in their offices. Lisa Fields and Brent Lester will remain in their positions. Brandon Johnson, Jamie Wheeler, and Ron Cummings, welcome to the party. I expect great things from all of you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Brandon, thank you, Lisa.
No, no hug before you leave?
No, no, thank you.
I do have Ms. Jamie Wheeler on the phone. And Jamie, we thank you for calling in.
Well...
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You get to be a different kind of leader in our school system now. You've got principal experience on both the middle school and high school levels. Now you, now you get to apply that experience to our school board.
Well, I'm excited, Patrick. This will be a new experience for me. I know, I know I have a lot to learn. I want to thank everybody that came out and supported me. I had a lot of really, really good help. Josh ran a great race, and it was a clean race. And, and it, it was, it was a nail biter. But I, I enjoy getting out and meeting people and knocking on doors. I really hope to help do a lot for the school system.
Of course, I've got a fellow sitting next to me. Isaac has a unique view of this, because he's actually a student at Campbell County High School.
Yes, Ms. Wheeler, you are now my...
Yes, Ms. Wheeler, you are now my school board representative, one of them, you know.
Isaac is in the fourth district with us.
With Ronnie Lasley being the other. So, yeah, you actually visited my house and talked to my grandparents a little bit, so we're appreciative of that and looking forward to this, my senior year of high school going into it.
Well, great. Well, I know you'll have a lot of good insights on what these, a lot of things that need to be done in the school system.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I'm ready, I'm ready to listen.
Yeah, that's appreciated. As a student, that's very appreciated.
Definitely.
Is Brandon still there?
Uh, we can make him come back. Brandon, slide on back in, please.
You know how weird it's gonna be to not call you Ms. Wheeler on the school board, Jamie? Even when you come and do business with me at the.
Listen, you call me Jamie anyway.
Even when you do business with me at the shop, I, I feel weird saying Jamie, you know? It's just programmed in the back of my mind.
That's just the way it always is.
No, listen, and I've known Brandon for a long time, and I can't wait to serve with him, Lisa Fields, and everyone on the board.
And Jamie, I'll, I'll tell you, my favorite project that you and I have worked on is making graduation go to Lincoln Memorial University more than a decade ago.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you know, and I, I really like that, Brandon, because that was, that was student driven.
Yep.
And you, you helped a lot with that.
Well, if it wasn't for the leadership that you had as an administrator and a student body that believed in you, just like the voters in your district have now, that would have never happened. And so I'm excited if we, if you and I could team up and do that, I'm excited to see what we can team up and do with, on the school board.
Well, I'm excited to work with everybody on the board, and I think all of us working together, I think we can accomplish a lot.
Congratulations, Mrs. Wheeler. I'm going home, I'm tired.
Go home, Lisa.
It's been a long day.
I hope you can get there, there's trees down.
Oh, I know, I'll have to go the long way one.
See you, Jamie. Congratulations.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Bye, guys. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brandon.
Bye again, Jamie. No hug again, Pat.
No hug.
I didn't get one.
Brandon's main. For whatever reason, I'm not sure, Al's not sure, the election commission's not sure, LaFollette Elementary School still is not in, why not the election commission to get their final total for that? We did have the LaFollette Elementary Schools' totals ourselves, didn't we?
We did, yeah. That, that was one of the earlier ones that came in for property assessor there. We've got 76, 10, and 157. And then we got some pretty solid numbers in that. From my understanding, those numbers came in off of what they post up after they count up there.
Now, as a new member, do you have any specific projects you want to start out of the gate with, or is this more of, let's get in there and see what we need?
She's gone.
She may be gone. Oh, well.
I noticed that. She said, thank you and goodbye.
Oh, well, I didn't hear that. Fans, all of you that have tuned in tonight, we appreciate, we try our best to get the information out to you. I feel like we did a pretty good job tonight. We've got, we're gonna do this again in a couple of months with a stacked LaFollette race and a careful race that still has time for people to jump in, so.
And I would encourage people to seek those offices if you feel called to do so.
Seek those offices. I mean, you might be, you know, for sure registered to vote, you might be voting for Isaac at any time now.
Yeah, anytime, right in.
Senior this year, he's gonna graduate, he'll be ready to go.
Well, I was in Washington D.C. and announced my campaign for presidency in 2048, so Jones for president, 2048.
There you go, folks, you heard it here first. Well, second, because Isaac did it nuts on Instagram.
Oh, yes.
Fans, I can't thank all, all of you enough for tuning in. This is one of the more rewarding parts of the job, is informing people of things that actually affect them.
Yes.
And these local races are definitely going to affect, it was like John said, this is the stuff that hits your day-to-day life.
And thank you to all of our people out in the field. Thank you to Al for, you know, standing through the thunderstorm, and he's been with the election commission all night long. You know, thank you to Sophia Demott, who came by. Thank you to Devin Kits.
Melman.
Melman, Adama.
Everybody Cole.
Eli Lawson.
Eli Lawson. Devin Jones, who I get to start doing football with again, and Josh gets to start doing football with again here in just a few weeks.
Vanessa Creepmore, Samantha Walden.
And Megan. Here we have our newest member of the Toms family. We're gonna let Megan jump in there a little bit. We're gonna let Megan actually pronounce her last name, so I don't mess it up, because I know I'm going to.
It's okay. Breathe.
Megan, pronounce that last name for us.
The landing ham.
The landing ham, okay. I knew I was gonna mess that up.
They'll get wrong again the rest of their lives.
If you can say Schwarzenegger, you can say The Landing Ham.
Say Megan V.
Yeah.
Megan's been doing a great job for us. She's been covering Jellico and Carrible and Jacksboro, and she's gonna be getting in there and doing, and filling in some of those areas that we've needed filled for a while. So we're very grateful that you thank you.
I guess I could not appreciate you more.
It's a, truly, it's a pleasure to get to work with you all, and it's a great opportunity for myself. I'm not even out of college yet, and this is, I'm already in my field of work that I've wanted to do since I was, since I was in middle school.
Yeah.
So truly, thank you.
Honey, you're very welcome, and we're very glad to have you. And like I said, you're doing a wonderful job, and, and that speaks volumes. That speaks volumes.
You'll be right neck deep in it with the city elections coming up here in November.
You'll be sick of elections before.
I've already been told, you should go, you should go interview these people, you should go interview this person.
Maybe you can interview all our mayoral candidates for us.
There we go.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we've got quite a surprise coming up on that one. Actually, the, the city of LaFollette, we're gonna have quite a, I don't know, let's call it a shindig, for lack of a better word. That's gonna be a.
A lot of shindigs.
Yeah, shindig will be fun. We'll have a lot of fun with the city of LaFollette this year. We're looking forward to that, and all those that are running for office, so.
Big congratulations to all the winners, all your new office holders. You know, we can't wait to see the job you do, all the incumbents, one, obviously the people think you do a great job. So congratulations to everybody, that's what I want to say for my final words on it.
Brent Lester had texted a little while ago and said he was on his way down, but now that's been just a bit. Here he is.
Ah, it's Brent. Brent did make it.
He did.
It's been a.
A little wet out there.
Yeah, it's gonna get you size. Wet, trees across the road, signs boiling around, but.
Yeah, well, thank you, Megan. Thank you. We're so glad you helped us.
Brent's been doing a good job, and I agree, Brent has done a good job. Plus, you can talk to him, first thing out of his mouth, he does it for the kids in the camp. Guys?
Brent?
Hey, guys.
Hey, Brent.
Now, Brent, I, I made the statement earlier when we declared you winner, you have unique perspectives. You've got to see it as a parent.
Yes.
You've got to see it as a coach.
Yep.
And you've got to see it as a spouse and an educator.
Right.
So you have perspectives that most people on the school board might have one of, whereas you have all of.
Yeah, I get, I get it all, and I take in everything, so it gives me a good perspective of what needs to be done and where some issues are, so.
What would you like to say to your voters tonight to put you back in office?
You know, it is, it meant the world to me. To be voted in for a third term, you know, that's, that's outstanding. And, you know, I, I just want you to know that I, I work hard for you and I continue to work hard. It's all about the kids and the teachers and all the staff, and, and everybody takes to run the school system, so.
Now, we have districts, but, you know, Brent, he crosses districts lines like the rest of the school board. You get things done for every school, and everybody should appreciate it.
Yeah, that's important. You know, we're all one county. We are. If, if somebody needs something, it's good to get it for them, if we can get it. And, you know, it's what I've always stated since day one, and that's what I run on, and I've said it multiple times, you know? I'm gonna continue to give our kids the same opportunities, the same stuff that surrounding counties have. You know, it's not, I'm not gonna sit and watch other counties get something that's nice and try to, you know? You know, it, it, kids take pride in what you have, and you perform better, you do better, you know, when you have better stuff. And so, you know, it's just, it's just a fact. So it's just always gonna be about that for me. We're gonna have the same stuff.
Sophia, thank you for all your help tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Eight years ago, you did promise that you were gonna do all those things. Campbell County now has one of the nicest football facilities in the world, or in the state, I mean, and one of the nicest, you know, general high schools around, all the other schools about to improve. Now, Jellico is probably the nicest 1A facility in the state.
I don't know of any, any, many 1A schools that have a new turf.
They're private, they're private schools.
Private schools, if they are.
But, you know, other things, Jellico Elementary is getting their gym redone. Jacksboro Elementary is getting a vastly needed improvement to their gymnasium and cafeteria.
Yeah. Jellico High School last year got new bleachers and their gym redone. One thing we've done, and if you look at it, you know, we're pretty much set with the, you know, maintenance on schools. We've, we've got new roofs on most of the schools, you know? All the schools have been paved, all our air conditioning units have been updated, so we use the money wisely that we have. And, you know, I said this a couple, a few minutes ago to somebody, you know, there's pods of money, accounts that we have, you know, when we build these nice things for the kids, you know, you, you get on social media and stuff, and, you know, I try not to pay attention to it, but, you know, I do have kids and they have to hear it too. Those pods of money, those accounts of money can't be used for certain things.
Correct.
People think they can be used for. And if you don't use them, you lose them. So I'm gonna continue to build nice stuff for our kids, not just athletics, anything.
If you've never worked with a government budget, it's really hard to grasp how that works.
It is. When I first went in, I thought I was gonna save the world, and, you know, but when you get in there, you learn how these, you know, the comp trailer in the state controls a lot of that. You can get trouble very easily.
Right, you, you do not want the comp trailer to show up. If the comp trailer shows up, you've probably done something bad.
And we've had a good record with that. We've, we've not been in any issues with them, so we're good stewards of the money. But either use it or, you know.
Obviously, you've, you know, you made, you made promises, you kept promises, and your voters appreciated it to put you back in.
They did, and I appreciate them very much.
As a student, Isaac, do you have anything you'd like to say to Brent?
Yeah, Brent, I can say that, you know, you don't just care for athletics, you do care for all the board, and your support in CT has been overwhelming, and I'm. We're not done there. That's my next thing, it's, yeah, we wanna grow that. And, and, you know, as a, as somebody that's been in the school system with your children, I've went to school with Bella since the third grade. So you, you have a great family, and, and you're all around just a great person. But I really appreciate that, that means a lot.
We've, we've got a pretty interesting comment in here in the, in the live stream. It's from a Bella Lester, said, yay, Dad.
I bet she's making a face while doing it.
She's been very excited.
Bella's, Bella's very enthusiastic.
She, she got the early vote before I did, and I was trying to listen, and she was